Good time. Well, every year, Pope County and Prairie Meadows, we have great partnership. And this year, we, it's one of our largest giving. As you can see, the check is over $7 million, almost $8 million to give to the city. And really, the most, most of it, it's five and a half million, I think, has contributed from Prairie Meadows, and about two and a half is from what Pope County contributes to the city. So, we're pleased to be able to bring that to you tonight, to use at your discretion. But I know you do great things with it. So, once again, we're pleased to have this great partnership with Prairie Meadows and what we do and give to the community. You can see all throughout Pope County, all the great things that, because of them, and I know that Julie has a few words, but they had a great year, I know.
All right. No, we have a great partnership with the City of Des Moines Pope County Supervisors, and this helps us fulfill our mission of giving back and making this community better. And so, with this $7.6 million, we're happy to present you tonight with a check.
Thank you very much. On behalf of the city, we'll never turn down this kind of money. We know that we can do great things for the citizens of this community, and we appreciate the partnership with the county and Prairie Meadows on what they do each and every day to help improve lives for our citizens. So, thank you.
Welcome.
All right. That check's in the mail.
Okay.
The real check. I'll try to cash that one.
Thank you very much.
As the council's returning to the dais, Mayor Proton, if I could, just so the public's clear, every dollar of those funds goes to streets and bridge, bridge work across the city. So, streets and bridges, it's accounted for.
Linda, if you want to come down and join me? I don't know if Erica Harris, if she's here too, whoever wants to be a part of this. We have a proclamation for Women's History Month. Whereas women of various race, I'll wait till everybody gets in. Oh, we have a crew here. We got, hi there. Whereas women of various race, class, and ethnic backgrounds have made historic contributions to the growth and strength of the United States in countless ways. And whereas women played a unique role throughout history by providing the majority of the volunteer labor force of the nation. And whereas women are critical to the nation's economic, cultural, and social vitality. And whereas, throughout history, despite hardship, exclusion, and discrimination, women have strived and sacrificed for equity and equality in communities across the nation. And whereas, women have been leaders, not only in securing their own rights of suffrage and equal opportunity, but also in the abolitionist movement, the emancipation movement, the industrial labor movement, the civil rights movement, and other movements, especially the peace movement, which creates a more fair and just society for all. And whereas, despite these contributions, the role of women in history has been consistently overlooked, undervalued in the literature, teaching, and study of American history. And whereas, the City of Des Moines joins the National Women's History Alliance, which spearheaded the movement, for the month of March being declared National Women's History Month, and celebrating Women's History Month with 2023 theme, "Celebrating Women Who Tell Our Stories." On behalf of the City Council of Des Moines and the residents of Des Moines, we do hereby proclaim the month of March 2023 as Women's History Month. So, there you go. Thank you very much. So, on behalf of all of you who work, I believe, in this city, so thank you for what you do each and every day for our citizens also. Our regular meeting will start at 5:00. Until then, we'll be adjourned. Our regular meeting will start at 5:00. Until then, we'll be adjourned. I'd like to call to order the March 6, 2023, meeting for the Des Moines City Council. Clerk, please take the roll.
County?
Here.
Bozen?
Here.
Voss?
Here.
Shoemaker?
Here.
Westergaard?
Here.
Mandelbaum?
Here.
Gatto?
Here.
We have a quorum.
Item number two is approving the agenda as presented and/or as amended.
Move.
And I was just going to go through the items. We have a few amendments and changes. 4G and 4U are withdrawn. Number 11 is corrected. Number 17 is corrected. Number 20 is updated. Number 28 is withdrawn by city manager for further study. In the regular agenda items, 51, 52, and 53 are corrected. 56 is corrected, and 56A is added. With that, I'll entertain-
Second.
A motion by county, a second by Gatto, please vote. I guess it's a voice vote? Voice vote?
Aye.
Aye.
Item number three is approving the consent agenda, and those are items 3 through 44. And on those, we have item number 25, Mandelbaum votes no. Item 37 and 42, Shoemaker votes no.
Move approval.
Second.
Second.
Aye.
Seven, yes.
Okay, we will move on to the hearing items. For the hearing items, this evening, we have three conveyance hearings, one land exchange agreement hearing, five zoning hearings, number 49 through 53, one design alternative hearing, one continuance on which no public comment will be taken this evening, and six public improvement hearings. As a reminder, for the zoning items only, which are items 49 through 53, we will hear from parties in interest first, and then the general public. The parties of interest for zoning items include only the applicant for the rezoning and those previously living within 250 feet of the property to be rezoned to whom the city has sent notices. After all the parties and interests have commented, we will open it up to any member of the public for germane comments. The first hearing item is item 45 on conveyance of city-owned property to NFC Properties LLC for redevelopment of housing, council communication number 23-114. Any parties of interest? Anyone wishing to speak? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
Move approval.
Second. Please vote.
Aye.
Seven, yes.
Item number 46 on conveyance of excess city property locally known as 85 Jefferson Avenue to LT Leon Associates Incorporated for $15,000. Is there any party of interest? Anyone wishing to speak from the public? If not, entertain a motion.
I'll move 46.
Second.
Please vote.
Aye.
Seven, yes.
Item number 46 on conveyance of excess city property locally known as 1439 and 1445 Michigan Street to TD and MD LLC for $40,000. It's council communication number 23-126. There's any party of interest? If you could state your name and address?
Miami, it's Tom Dux, 15523 Oakwood Drive, Urban Real Iowa. I just noticed today, after I picked up the program, that number 46, which is substantially larger than the property I'm buying, puts a little bit better price, with not the scrubbery on it, without the woods on it that I have to take down. So, I simply asked the council to consider that price up on Jefferson. Very nice lot I could go buy today with my son. I understand it might be a little bit of something they might have to eradicate and take off the property. But anyhow, I've got a full lot plus of wood to take off there. I'd like the city to consider letting the city help me take it down and dispose of that. Of course, certainly, you all know that we have a lot of people living on that property also at this point. So, before I could even consider doing anything, I need to have some assistance in removing the occupants of that property. Thank you.
Thank you.
I guess, question, I mean, we really can't, can we negotiate this at the table? We would have to continue it, correct? And we do have a machinery that could go in and probably take down all the scrub. I mean, if that's what we, I mean, we do have, we do have something that could go in-
This has already been agreed to, correct?
Yeah, this is our-
This has already been agreed to.
Okay.
Are you asking to delay so that you can have more consideration?
Continue delay? You know, it's already, yeah, the new law for what I'm attempting to do went into effect January 1st. And so, because of the process it's taken this long, there's no hurry for me to proceed and go further. I'd like to get it done correctly, and I'd like to have it done with all the help in the world.
And you do represent TD and MD LLC?
That's correct.
Do we need to hear more, ask for more public input or no, before a motion?
Well, at this point, I think if there wants to be a continuance, we can vote to continue, and that we can have more conversation on it.
The hearing would be rescheduled.
We can reschedule.
Okay.
Then I'll- Other people that are here that want to comment-
Right, yeah, right, they can comment.
-can't comment.
So, we wait for more public comment before a motion?
Right.
Okay.
So, at this time, if there's anyone else that would like to speak?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. If they're seeing no one else-
I'll move to continue 47.
Second.
Okay, in this case, we're moving to continue it?
Continue and have the-
Continue to the next meeting?
For three weeks.
Right.
Okay, thank you.
And you'll negotiate with real estate at that time?
Yes, thank you.
Right, it's got under your direction?
Yep.
Okay.
Aye.
Seven, yes.
Motion carries. Item number 48 on approval of documents for a land exchange agreement with Jerry Holmes Incorporated for property located between East Peyton Avenue and East Army Post Road for the Carlisle Trail Connection Project. Is there anyone from the general public? Or anyone of interest? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion.
I see none, Your Honor. I will move 48. And then, I think, the next council meeting, March 28th, will, this is, and I appreciate that we're connecting to Carlisle, but it is in the City of Des Moines. So, I think that we're going to come up with a, with a name, with the help of Councilman Voss, that we're not going to call it the Carlisle Trail in the City of Des Moines. So, we'll talk a little bit about that the next meeting. So, I will move item 48.
Please vote.
Aye.
Seven, yes.
Motion carries. Item number 48 on approval of documents for a land exchange agreement with Jerry Holmes Incorporated for property located between East Peyton Avenue and East Army Post Road for the Carlisle Trail Connection Project. Is there anyone from the general public? Or anyone of interest? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion.
I just wondered, is the manager, is the store manager here? I mean, that, that shopping mall is pretty much empty. I'm not sure why they wouldn't, like, take on more of the shopping mall instead of starting to throw a bunch of things in the parking lot. I'm a little confused with that. And so, it'd be nice to, maybe, maybe we need to consider, maybe we need to continue it, because I just, I mean, so, as I read through P&amp;Z, it really isn't clear how many more sheds and things they're going to put outside. And are they putting it all in the parking lot, or what are they doing? Is any of us that frequent that store, there's already quite a bit of stuff out in the parking lot already. And so, as we continue to, I mean, their competition up the street expanded and put everything out back. We're, I'm not sure if we're playing on the same playing field to allow them to be able to put everything out front of the store. I wish somebody, there's no representative from Home Depot here? I'll make a motion to continue this item then, until further discussion with staff and maybe Home Depot itself. There, there's a lot of empty space that they can probably take on inside and expand their store in that location. So, I'll move to continue item 50.
Is there a second?
Until, until the 27th, I think is when our next meeting is, please.
Is there a second? Please vote.
Seven, yes.
Item 51 on request from-
Public Realty Company, Caleb Smith Officer, for review and approval of a First Amendment
to the Southdale, Southdale PUD conceptual plan at 1300 Southeast 14th Street to allow expansion of a retail-use Home Depot to include additional outdoor display and merchandising in the parking lot. Again, the party of interest, if anyone is here to speak? And those are within 250 feet? And if anyone from the public? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion.
I, I just wondered, is the manager, is the store manager here? I mean, that, that shopping mall is pretty much empty. I'm not sure why they wouldn't, like, take on more of the shopping mall instead of starting to throw a bunch of things in the parking lot. I'm, I'm a little confused with that. And so, it'd be nice to, maybe, maybe we need to consider, maybe we need to continue it, because I just, I mean, so, as I read through P&amp;Z, it really isn't clear how many more sheds and things they're going to put outside. Are they putting it all in the parking lot, or what are they doing? Is any of us that frequent that store, there's already quite a bit of stuff out in the parking lot already. And so, as we continue to, I mean, their competition up the street expanded and put everything out back. We're, I'm not sure if we're playing on the same playing field to allow them to be able to put everything out front of the store. I wish somebody, there's no representative from Home Depot here? I'll make a motion to continue this item then, until further discussion with staff and maybe Home Depot itself. There, there's a lot of empty space that they can probably take on inside and expand their store in that location. So, I'll move to continue item 50.
Is there a second?
Until, until the 27th, I think is when our next meeting is, please.
Is there a second? Please vote.
Seven, yes.
Item 51 on request from Hubble Realty Company, Caleb Smith Officer, for review and approval of a First Amendment to the Gray Station, EUDU, EUDU is this one? Yeah, this, oh, this one's getting corrected. Conceptional plan for property located in the vicinity of 1300 Tuttle Street to update the realignment of Southwest 13th Street and to revise review requirements for future PUD development site plans and continue to March 27, 2023, at the request of the developer.
Move.
Please vote.
Seven, yes.
Motion carries. Item 52 on request from Hubble Realty Company, Caleb Smith Officer, for review and approval of PUD final development plan for Gray Station Tullis condos for property located in the vicinity of 1300 Tuttle Street to allow development of the property with the construction of two condo buildings containing 84 residential units and to continue to March 27, 2023, at the request of the developer.
Move.
Please vote.
Seven, yes.
Motion carries. Item 53 on request from Hubble Realty Company, Caleb Smith Officer, for review and approval of the PUD final development plan for Gray Station Tullis condos for property located in the vicinity of 1300 Tuttle Street to allow development of the property with the construction of two condo buildings containing 84 residential units and to continue to March 27, 2023, at the request of the developer.
Move.
Please vote.
Seven, yes.
Motion carries. An item number 54 on the request of Gasman Real Estate LLC, Jason Gasman Officer, regarding the appeal of the denial of type 2 alternatives to the site plan necessary for construction of a 10-foot-tall electrified security fence on property located at 2822 Sixth Avenue. Choose one alternative below, A to deny, or B to approve. First, the parties of interest?
How you guys doing? Jason Gasman, 2822 Sixth Avenue. I've got some handouts. Is that okay if I pass them out at this time?
Yes.
I'll move to receive. Okay. There's two handouts. One is-
If we can take-
We do have something that can go in.
Yeah, this is our.
This has already been agreed to.
Okay.
Are you asking to delay so that you can have more consideration?
You know, it's already, the new law for what I'm attempting to do went into effect January 1st. And so because of the process it's taken this long, there's no hurry for me to proceed and go further. I'd like to get it done correctly, and I'd like to have it done with all the help in the world.
And you do represent TD and MD LLC?
That's correct.
Do we need to hear more, ask for more public input or no, before a motion?
Well, at this point, I think if there wants to be a continuance, we can vote to continue and then we can have more conversation on it.
It would be rescheduled.
We can reschedule.
Okay.
You also let other people that are here that want to comment.
Right, yeah, right, they can comment.
So we wait for more public comment before a motion?
Right.
Okay.
So at this time, if there's anyone else that would like to speak? Okay. If they're seeing no one else?
I'll move to continue 47.
Second.
Okay, in this case, we're moving to continue it?
Continue and have the.
Continue to the next meeting?
For three weeks.
Right.
Okay, thank you.
And you'll negotiate with real estate at that time?
Yes, thank you.
Right, Scott, under your direction?
Yep.
Right.
Okay.
Hi.
Seven, yes.
Motion carries. Item number 48 on approval of documents for a land exchange agreement with Jerry Holmes Incorporated for property located between East Peyton Avenue and East Army Post Road for the Carlisle Trail Connection Project. Is there anyone from the general public? Or anyone of interest? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion.
I see none, Your Honor. I will move 48. And then I think the next council meeting, March 28th, will. This is, and I appreciate that we're connecting to Carlisle, but it is in the city of Des Moines. So I think that we're going to come up with a name with the help of Councilman Voss. But we're not going to call it the Carlisle Trail in the city of Des Moines. So we'll talk a little bit about that the next meeting. So I will move item 48.
Please vote.
Hi.
Seven, yes.
Motion carries. We have a hearing item on number 49 on request from Urban Dreams Isaiah Knox Officer to amend the Plan DSM creating our tomorrow plan to revise the future land use classification from industrial to community mixed use and to rezone 1615 Second Avenue from 11 Industrial District mixed to MX3 mixed use district to allow renovation or reuse of the existing building for the office and assembly uses. A is the first consideration of the ordinance above, and B is the final consideration of the ordinance above. waiver requested by applicant requires six votes. First, the parties in interest are the applicant for rezoning and those within 250 feet of the property to be rezoned if you could come up, if you'd like to speak.
Good evening. Shane Divick with CEC, 2486 Street in Urbandale, representing this rezoning. I have not heard any opposition to this throughout the whole process of planning and zoning and neighborhood meetings. And we're changing the designation just for the interior use of the building. If you have any questions, I'm going to take.
Okay, thank you. Anyone have questions? If not, we can open it up for your main comments from the general public for one minute. Seeing none at this time?
I'll just say I'm excited for this move and excited to see where this goes and get them in there as fast as possible. So I'll move 49A, 49, 49A and 49B.
I'll second.
Please vote.
Hi.
Okay, number 50 on request from.
Seven, yes.
Sorry about that. On request from WC MRP Des Moines Center LLC, Nathan Paul Officer, review and approval of a First Amendment to the Southdale PUD conceptual plan at 4900 Southeast 14th Street to allow expansion of a retail use Home Depot to include additional outdoor display and merchandising in the parking lot. Again, the party of interest, if anyone is here to speak. And those are within 250 feet. And if anyone from the public. Seeing none, entertain a motion.
I just wondered, is the manager, is the store manager here? I mean, that shopping mall is pretty much empty. I'm not sure why they wouldn't like take on more of the shopping mall instead of starting to throw a bunch of things in the parking lot. I'm a little confused with that. And so it'd be nice to, maybe, maybe we need to consider. Maybe we need to continue it because I just, I mean, so as I read through P&amp;Z, it really isn't clear how many more sheds and things they're going to put outside. And are they putting it all in the parking lot or what are they doing? Is any of us that frequent that store, there's already quite a bit of stuff out in the parking lot already. And so as we continue to, I mean, their competition up the street expanded and put everything out back. We're, I'm not sure if we're playing on the same playing field to allow them to be able to put everything out front of the store. I wish somebody, there's no representative from Home Depot here. I'll make a motion to continue this item then until further discussion with staff and maybe Home Depot itself. There's a lot of empty space that they can probably take on inside and expand their store in that location. So I'll move to continue item 50.
Is there a second?
Until, until the 27th, I think is when our next meeting is, please.
Is there a second? Please vote.
Hi.
Seven, yes.
Item 51 on request from Hubble Realty Company Caleb Smith Officer for review and approval of a First Amendment to the Gray Station. E U D, E U D is this one? Oh, this one's getting corrected. Conceptional plan for property located in the vicinity of 1300 Tuttle Street to update the realignment of Southwest 13th Street and to revise review requirements for future PUD development site plans and continue to March 27th, 2023 at the request of the developer. Please vote.
Hi.
Did you get?
Seven, yes.
Motion carries. Item 52 on request from Hubble Realty Company Caleb Smith Officer for review and approval of PUD final development plan for Gray Station Tullis condos for property located in the vicinity of 1300 Tuttle Street to allow development of the property with the construction of two condo buildings containing 84 residential units and to continue to March 27th, 2023 at the request of the developer. Please vote.
Hi.
Seven, yes.
Motion carries. Item 53 on request from Hubble Realty Company Caleb Smith Officer for review and approval of the PUD final development plan for Gray Station Five Town Homes and Clubhouse for property located in vicinity of 1300 Tuttle Street to allow for construction of 65 town homes and a clubhouse amenity building and to continue to March 27th, 2023 at the request of the developer.
I'll move item 53.
Second.
Please vote.
Hi.
Seven, yes.
Motion carries. An item number 54. On the request of Gasman Real Estate LLC, Jason Gasman Officer, regarding an appeal of the denial of type 2 alternatives to the site plan necessary for construction of a 10-foot-tall electrified security fence on property located at 2822 Sixth Avenue. Choose one alternative below, A to deny, or B to approve. First, the parties of interest.
How you guys doing? Jason Gasman, 2822 Sixth Avenue. I've got some handouts. Is that okay if I pass them out at this time?
Yes.
I'll move to receive. Okay. There's two handouts. One is.
If we can take a vote.
Oh, sorry.
Please vote. Voice vote. Hi.
The first handout is pictures of what the fence actually would look like. And the second is the safety feature, a little thing. My name is Jason Gasman, president and owner of Bell Brothers Heating and Air Conditioning. Bell Brothers will be celebrating 68 years in August in business and has been in Des Moines, Iowa the entire time. We've been at our location at 2822 since the 1970s. We currently have 100 employees. We've spent a lot of time over the years investing in the community and giving back. I'm personally on the John R. Grubb Y Board here locally, just a couple of blocks up from where I'm at. Also a member of the Better Business Bureau Board. And Steve Terry, my vice president, is on the Board of Examiner and Appeals and my dad before him. We are very much, our home base is Des Moines. We are good for the area that we're in, our property, we maintain it, we take care of it. This is me and my employees' home. This is where I go. I spend more time at work at Bell Brothers than I do at my own personal residence. This is my life. But over the last year, I've questioned staying at my business home and need help fixing a problem that has really just spiraled out of control, and I'm not sure what to do anymore. My daughter's in attendance. Tessa, will you stand up quick? The first incident started a little over a year ago, 2:30 Sunday afternoon. It was a nice day. We're down at the office. She's helping me do some cleaning. I'm doing some work. People are playing at Riverview Park just right, you can see it right from our office. You can see the video. My daughter goes out to throw some stuff in the dumpster. There's a guy in our, I wish I had, is there a way I can put a picture of the years ago right here? So if you see the, I can't see the circles, but this white building, that's the building. This is Bell Brothers, everything in the black. Our scrap dumpster where we scrap metal and stuff, there was a guy physically inside the dumpster at 2:30 in the afternoon on a Sunday. My daughter goes to throw garbage in there. He looks right at her from me to you away, and she's scared. She sets the bags down, runs back in. And I didn't want to believe her until I looked at the camera and just walked, walked and just kind of walked measly to the fence, which is located with the big circle, which is where they get in most of the time. As you can imagine, I was very upset. I went after the guy. He was already gone. Called the police on 2:30 on a Sunday afternoon in broad daylight. Incident number two was a catalytic converter weekend. I'm sure you guys remember that back last April where a lot of places got hit. But if you watch with the ease, oh, were you asking a question? Oh, I'm sorry. You got hit too. So you know, you know what it's like. So the, they actually entered in my fence. You can watch it on camera. They literally just climbed over the fence, threw their sawzalls over the fence, got the catalytic converters, walked out. They knew they were on camera. They saw the cameras. They didn't care. Then you fast forward another couple of months to this area right here again. I'm sorry. This is the point of interest where you can see it's protected from every, this is an alley right here and really very good hiding place for people to get through, and they don't care. Incident three, they cut through the fence on the lower part. It has barbed wire wrapped around the top. They get through, busted out four windows and vans, stole personal tools of up to $15,000. 5K and truck windows, had to fix the fence. They tore into one of my delivery vans and ripped the ignition switch out, which we ended up just totaling the van, or excuse me, the pickup. Then another week later, somebody threw a rock at my front window, busted my front window. Couple more weeks later, went through the same access point again. This time, we had put a camera up with a motion light. The criminals this time actually physically took the camera down at 12:30 at night and proceeded to bust out two more vans, stole our duct cleaning camera, which is about $3,000 in glass. And then we actually had another incident right after that that I didn't even report to the police because I was, this wasn't worth it anymore. So estimated losses for 2022 for Bell Brothers, I think I'm light on this, but $66,000 to $70,000 is what I'm coming up with, paid property taxes of $32,500. Before I let Chris from the fence place speak, I just want to say one more thing. Bell Brothers has been my home. We're a legacy business in this town. We love being here. We're good for the area. But I'm going to be honest with you. I cannot remain where I'm at, and I won't if I don't get some assistance and some help because I really don't know what to do. I feel defenseless. The Amorak system that you're going to see.
Thank you.
Sorry.
Will have, thank you for your comments.
Thank you, and I hope I have some time to yield back to Mr. Gasman because it's very compelling what he has to say. But my name's Chris Eaton. I'm vice president of government relations for Amorak. We have 6,000 fences across the country, and we have orders in Alaska and Hawaii now. There is a pervasive problem across the country with crime and outdoor equipment and vehicles that cannot be protected by traditional sources. I wanted to address a couple of things that came up in planning and zoning that I think are very, very important. First, the aesthetics. This fence does not add visual clutter, no more so than a barbed wire on top of a chain link, which is all over that neighborhood. Two, the fence was, at the time of the planning and zoning commission, not listed by a nationally recognized testing laboratory because we were going, we were actually going through the process of getting it listed. As of March 4th this year, we are now listed through a nationally recognized testing laboratory, SGS. And I have copies of it here for you. Basically, this is the standard for these electric fence energizers. And to give you an idea of what the fence actually does, which sits 12 inches behind the existing perimeter fence, it has poles on the corners, very thin gauge horizontal lines that are eight inches apart at the point that the, and go two feet higher than the eight-foot fence. There are little one-inch fiberglass poles every 30 feet or so. So, and, and the fence generates a pulse every 1.3 seconds for 3/10,000ths of a second. That's how, that's why it's safe because it's charged off a 12-volt battery. The one pager that he, that Mr. Gasman provided you is from Dr. Mark Crowell. He's an international expert on biomedical engineering. He explains in layman's terms why the fence is safe. We wouldn't have 6,000 of these fences if they didn't work. 99% reduction in attempted break-ins just by its presence across the country. We have national clients with over 200 installations. The fence works. Mr. Gasman needs it. We plead for your approval of this and for his business to continue to thrive. Thank you.
Just real quick to sum it up.
We just, we have, like you had your five minutes though at this point. Yeah, we can ask questions now, so.
Absolutely.
If there's any questions from the council.
You handed this, I don't know, there's like a bunch of different styles. Which style are you?
The fence is the same. The electric fence behind the fences that you're seeing, those are wrought iron fences. They could be chain link fences. They could be center block walls. Our fence sits behind it and is virtually detectable. Before I started working for Amorak, I never saw one. It was only after I started working for Amorak that I started noticing because I was looking for them. When you're driving by, you don't see them. So it's, it's, it's behind those fences. You can actually. No, no. It's a, it's, you may see on some of them the fiberglass poles that are holding the thin wires. It's a very thin gauge wire that's behind the fence, and it sits 12 inches behind it. So you cannot touch it unless you are meaning to commit trespass or theft. The other thing that I want to make sure that people understand is the safety aspect of it. It is an unpleasant experience. I've touched it. Most employees have. It cannot hurt you, even if you have a pacemaker or arrhythmia or anything else because of the short blast, the 3/10,000ths of a second. It is not a fatal blast. This is not Jurassic Park-type fence. It's a very safe, from our perspective, it's safe. We just want to warn off people that would want to intrude, and it does, it's very effective in that.
What happens if you cut it?
If you cut it, the alarm will sound. It's an alarm system. So, in essence, in many states, we have statewide compliance and statewide permitting processes to create uniformity across all jurisdictions. And it's treated as an alarm system for the purposes of permitting and licensing. And the construction and installation standards and all those go into the statute. So we're very adept at it, and if you cut it, an alarm will sound, video starts rolling. The alarm company calls Mr. Gasman or whoever the contact is and to verify so he can take a look to see what's going on, and if necessary, the police are summoned. That's, that's how it works.
For clarity, there aren't statewide standards?
I'm sorry?
For clarity, there aren't statewide standards in Iowa?
Not in Iowa, no ma'am. We have statewide standards in 16 states so far. We're pursuing statewide standards and a few more this year, and we just, it depends on the jurisdiction. But we have 16 states where we have statewide standards.
And to be clear, there's a fence there now. And this electric fence will be 12 inches behind it.
Yes, ma'am.
And I know somebody showed me a picture of their child that had put their hand, you know, through the regular fence. But you'd have to be a pretty tiny hand. I went and walked the site, the site with Mr. Gasman so I understand what he's saying. I mean, you've got to, you've got to really want to touch that fence. And the most important thing is, is that the alarm system and, I mean, you touch it and it's really not going to hurt you. It might scare you off.
It's, the way I liken it, because I've touched it, I liken it to a super, supercharged, static charge, like when you rub your feet on dry carpet and you touch somebody, you get that little. It's a lot, more, it's more memorable than that, much more memorable. It makes you not want to touch it again.
But it is safe.
Yeah, it will not hurt.
I just want to say something quick. I would never put anybody from the public in harm's way with this fence. And I would not approve having this on my property if I hadn't thought about this 5,000 times. I mean, literally, I just, that was all I wanted to finish with my statement. So that's coming to me.
And then we'll come back to Linda. No, Linda, go first.
My question is, Mr. Gasman, how many people do you employ there?
100.
100 people, so that's 100 jobs.
Yep.
And you've been there for how many years?
1955.
1955.
Well, we started our company in 1955. Bob Bell moved the business there in the 70s. He started up on Sixth and College.
Okay. Because you've been, you've been part of the community, you're an important part of Ward 2. And I just shudder to think what would happen if that business were gone.
Shaw's gone, and you don't want to lose Bell Brothers.
Yeah.
Shaw left because of these various, various reasons. And Shaw's, the owner of Shaw is a good friend of mine.
And $70,000 is a lot of damage. And I saw where they just come and they cut the fence, go in, do their damage, and then get back out. And if they knock your cameras out, there's nothing you can.
I'm here to tell you where we hung the cameras, ladies and gentlemen. They really had to try to knock that thing down.
I saw it.
They really did.
Okay, I think the.
I had some questions for staff, but I would be fine with asking them after the hearing. But I just wanted to note that so they can make their way over here.
And Mr. Manon?
So I'm assuming that you've tried other things before getting to this.
Cameras, motion lights, calling the police. We have a detective on the case right now. I have no idea who's doing it. I have some ideas, but I don't want to say anything. But I think somebody in the community. So, I mean, yeah, that's all I know.
You've got it lit up pretty well back there.
Yeah.
I could tell you that I was a police officer for 20 years in Texas, outside of Dallas. Worked burglary for five years, narcotics for five years, and five years on D-94. There is no way to protect an outside yard, outdoor yard with, with any effectiveness without a product like this. There are warning placards every 30 feet also that warn anybody that unknowingly would walk by, try to, for whatever reason, open the gate. Also, the fence is deactivated and activated like an alarm system. So when they arrive in the morning, they deactivate it. You can't get hurt from the inside if you march up against it when the business is open because it's not active. So I just want to kind of clarify those points.
Mike, are you here to answer questions or?
Yeah, I just wanted to wait till after the hearing.
Okay, we'll wait till after the hearing. Okay. If there's, let's see, if there's anyone within 250 feet of the property wishes to speak, or we'll open it up to the public. If you would like to speak, step forward and give your name, address, or your ward, and you have one minute to speak.
My name is Jolene Prescott. I live at 3013 Third Street. My grandson lives a block from this place. I live just a few blocks. I have a picture of him sticking his arm through the fence. All the way, it's more than 12 inches. And I figure it this way. If he can reach that fence, then we need to have a bigger discussion about this. I, I am just going to say you've got to deny this right now. This has got to go before Highland Park, Oak Park. If he can stick his hand in there, this is on its way to a, to a park in our town. I want, I need more information, and I think the people of Highland Park deserve more information on this. But this just shocked the heck out of me that he could touch it. He could reach out and touch it. Any kid can do this. And we don't know what a shock would do to a child. So I need to have more information. I think the people of Highland Park need more information. Thank you.
Okay. At this time, is there a motion?
I wanted to ask some questions.
Okay. You have another question?
So there was some discussion about other places where there are electric fences in Des Moines. Can you talk about that?
Yeah, I don't have all the locations where they are. We have prohibited it under our code, so.
And were all the exceptions previously from the zoning board of adjustment?
Yes, under our old code, the fencing regulations were under the Board of Adjustments purview.
Oh, so this isn't going to Board of Adjustment because it's, because of the new code?
It's under the new code, so it's just subject to P&amp;Z review or the P&amp;Z already reviewed it.
Okay. Do you know anything about why those other fences, like, I saw that they were near the area in Vandelia, but like, why they were approved? Because our code just says only for agricultural use, correct?
Yeah, yes. Some of those could have been before there were prohibitions on electric fences or there are salvage yards. I can't speak to 25 years of fence approvals in the state as far as what, what the circumstances were.
Okay. I mean, that's what I wanted to ask about, like the precedent essentially for this.
Based on that, is there?
I'll make a motion, and I know that this is a tough one, but I've been to the site. I've walked the site. I've seen what kind of damage has been done. And, you know, Jolene, I know that you're upset about this, but it's 12 inches. There's going to be signs up. There's no reason for somebody to put their, their hand through there. So with that, I'm going to make a motion to approve 54B.
I'll second it. Unfortunately, we don't want businesses that leave.
No, we don't.
For this reason, especially some of these vendors.
There's a motion on the table. So please vote.
Hi.
Six, yes. One, no.
Motion carries. Item 55 on the proposed urban renewal plan for the airport development urban renewal area. Council Communication Number 23-122, a resolution of necessity. Is there anyone that wants to speak to this item? Any persons of, in the public would like to speak? If not, I'll entertain a motion. Move to second, please vote.
Hi.
Seven, yes.
Motion carries. Item 56 on the proposed urban renewal plan for the Upper East Village urban renewal area has been moved. I guess we already, let's see, no, this is, it's going to be continued to a hearing to March 27th, 2023. Council Communication Number 23-123. Is there a motion to move? Oh, and A, I thought A needs to be continued to?
A is the setting date.
Okay, the setting of the date. And 56A, to set the date of hearing on a proposed amendment to the Plan DSM creating our tomorrow comprehensive plan to revise the future land use classification from public to semi-public to downtown mixed use for the area bound by Pennsylvania Avenue. to semi-public to downtown mixed use for the area bound by Pennsylvania Avenue on the West, Des Moines Street on the South, East 9th on the East, and the freeway I-235 on the North. And that is for 32723.
I'll move 56, 56A.
Second.
There's, please vote.
Seven, yes.
Item 57, 2023 HMA resurfacing program contract, one, resolution approving plans, specifications, form of contract documents, engineers estimate, receive and file bids, and designating the lowest responsive, responsible bidder as Grind's Asphalt and Paving Corporation. Timothy Melakot, president, for $955,593.95. Council communications number 23-109. Item 57A, approval of contract and bond and permission to sublet. Is there anyone wishing to speak on this?
No, Your Honor, I'll move 57, 57A.
Becca, is it, please vote. Motion carries.
It's Frank.
Frank, did you vote?
Seven, yes.
Motion carries. Item number 58. On 2023 Neighborhood Sidewalk Program Contract, the resolution approving plans and specifications, form of contract documents, engineers estimate, receive and file bids, and designating the lowest responsive, responsible bidder as TK Concrete Incorporated. Tony J. Vermeer, president, $704,530. Council communications number 23-106. Item 58A, approval of contract and bond and permission to sublet. Is there one, anyone wishing to speak on this item?
Seeing none, Your Honor, I'll move 58, 58A.
Please vote.
Seven, yes.
Motion carries. 59. Item 59. On Third and Court parking garage elevator replacement, resolution approving plans and specifications, form of contract documents, engineers estimate, receive and file bids, and designating the lowest responsive, responsible bidder as TK Elevator Corporation. Kevin Laval, president, $437,000. Council communication number 23-111. And 59A, approval of contract and bond, permission to sublet. Is there anyone that would like to speak on this item? Please state your name and ward or address.
Hello, my name is Adam Callanan. Use him pronouns, and I live in Ward 3. I live near this parking garage, and the city as a whole has a surplus already of parking garages. This is one of the older parking garages, and it was discussed at a previous meeting, potentially in the future, redeveloping some of these spaces, or at least stopping using these as parking garages, because we have a huge surplus, especially since COVID, parking garages are less, less used, they're pretty empty most of the time. Yeah, so I would just recommend that this is, we don't invest more money in that, and we look instead to redeveloping this location on Third and Kurt as soon as we can. Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak? If not, I'll entertain a motion. Please vote.
Seven, yes.
I will just say, I agree that we need to be reinvesting. We've had that conversation. I'm voting yes just now, just for upkeep, but I agree we need to move away from parking garages.
Item 60, on Easter Lake Drive sidewalk from Indianola Avenue to Easter Lake Park, resolution approving plans, specifications, form of contract documents, engineers estimate, receive and file bids, and designating the lowest responsive, responsible bidder as TK Concrete Incorporated. Tony J. Vermeer, president, for $1,931,910.75. Council communication number 23-112. 60A, approval of contract and bond and permission to sublet. Is there anyone wishing to speak on this? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
I see none, Your Honor. I appreciate staff getting this finally to the finish line. We had this on the, our docket in 2019 and got pulled because of COVID, so it is below the estimated 2.2 million, so that is good. So we'll move items 60 and 60A.
Second.
This is going to open up a lot of neighborhoods to our trail system.
Aye.
Seven, yes.
Motion carries. Item 61, on Guthrie Avenue Trail from East 21st Street to Hubble Avenue, resolution approving plans, specifications, form of contract documents, engineers estimate, receive and file bids, and designating the lowest responsive, responsible bidder as TK Concrete Incorporated. Tony J. Vermeer, president, $1,251,035. Council communication number 23-107. 61A, approval of contract and bond and permission to sublet. Is there anyone wishing to speak to this? Seeing no one, is there a motion?
Yeah, I'm going to leave it.
To approve?
I, I'll move to approve item. I'll move to approve items 61 and 61A.
There's a motion. In a second, please vote.
Aye.
Seven, yes.
Motion carries. Item 62, on Woodland Cemetery roadway improvements, resolution approving plans, specifications, form of contract documents, engineers estimate, receive and file bids, and designating the lowest responsive, responsible bidder as MPS Engineers PC, doing business as Kingston Services PC. Omish Shitai, president, $709,181. Council communication number 23-110. 62A, approval of contract and bond, permission to sublet. Is there anyone wishing to speak to this item?
Seeing none, Mayor Protem, I'll move items 62 and 62A.
Second.
Motion in a second, please vote.
Aye.
Seven, yes.
That ends our hearings, and it is now 5:45. Next item is our ordinances. On 63, to rezone 4415 Hubble Avenue from MX-3 Mixed Use District to limited CX Mixed Use District to allow use of property for auto body, body painting. And 63A, final consideration of ordinance, waiver requested by Larry Dees Breg Jr., require six votes.
I will move item 63 and waive the third reading. And thanks to the owner, I met with him, I've been on site, I went through the building, I'm completely comfortable with, so, and I see he brought his Cub Scout with him. Way to go.
You're 63 and A?
63.
And A?
And A.
Okay, there's a motion. In a second, please vote.
Aye.
Seven, yes.
This is the first consideration. Item number 64 is amending sections 134-3.6.3, 134-3.9.6, and sections 135-8.2.2 relating to outdoor storage. Seeing, is there a motion to approve?
I'll move item 64 in pursuit of rule 42A. I'll move to waive the second reading.
Is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion. In a second, please vote.
Seven, yes.
Motion carries. Item 65, a voluntary agreement on wages with the ASME Council 61 Local 3673 for fiscal year 2024. Council communications number 23-104.
Move item 65, Your Honor, in pursuit of rule 42A, I'll waive the second and third reading.
And a second.
There, there's no.
There's no.
There's no waiver.
No waiver.
Reading.
Okay, there's a motion. In a second, please vote.
Mayor Protem, if I could, is.
Aye.
To finish up the votes, I really want to send out appreciation to both the units that you see here, the ASME and the MEA group, for working with both legal and our HR teams to, to get these done. Very, very good relationship that we have, so, very thankful.
Seven, yes.
Motion carries. Item 66, the Agreement for Municipal Employees Association for the period July 1, 2023 through July 30, 2026. Council communication number 23-105. Please vote.
Seven, yes.
Motion carries. Next item is our public speaking. It's, for those persons wishing to speak this evening, under the public speaking item of the agenda, we will only be calling on those who have registered to speak. All speakers must comply with the rules regarding their names and addresses, or they will not be recognized to speak. Each of the eight speakers this evening will receive up to two minutes each to make their comments. Please keep your own time, because at the end of the two minutes, a clerk will announce the time, and the speaker's mic will be closed, and we will move immediately to the next speaker. We want to hear from all of our residents, and we encourage residents to be respectful of others' viewpoints that are different from their own. The first person is Chris Robinson.
Good evening, City Council members. My name is Chris Robinson. I am a member of the CCI's racial justice team. I live in Des Moines at 1259 Stewart. For those of you who have been willing to work with us, listen, and take steps to move towards positive change, I want to say thank you, and we hope you will do more to push for change. There are still some of you that are unwilling to work with us because of, you have hurt feelings. If you fit that category, I want you to sit on this. The community, the community feels, the community feels they have been hurt for decades, in particular, the black residents living in Des Moines. We've been subject to profiling and harassment because of the color of our skin. As a black man, I know what it feels like to be broken and disrespected due to the fact I was born in this black skin, which I cannot change. But you can change a system that has worked against us and continues to work for a system that will treat all residents equal. Yes, we're making progress again, slowly, but let's make sure if everyone on the council is, if, if everyone on this council is unwilling to work for a better community, you are working against some of our own voters. I hope you are able to set aside your hurt feelings, which is counterproductive, and work for the community that is safe for everyone. It's time to take off blinders and see what continues to happen in Des Moines' black and brown residents. Let's do better. We can do better. You know, just because sometime, you, all you guys are elected officials, just because you get your feelings hurt sometimes, that don't mean you want, you should take the basketball and go on home. It, it, it's not right. You're elected.
Harvey Harrison.
Could you hand those on down?
Move the receiving files.
Voice vote? I'll pay for I.
Ms. Mayor, members of the council, my name is Harvey Harrison. I live at 680 Harwood Drive in Des Moines, and I'm here this afternoon on behalf of Just Voices. Since George Floyd's murder in May of 2020, this council and the Des Moines Police Department have adopted some measures that the community has been demanding for years. Thank you for that. What has not changed is that the Des Moines Police Department continues to engage in racially biased policing. I've given you two charts that Just Voices has prepared on six years of citations and arrests. They not only show continuing disproportionality in law enforcement, but highlight that the odds of being cited and/or arrested, if you are black, are actually getting worse in some areas. That's unacceptable. I've recently reviewed video evidence of a racially biased pretextual stop with no citation and no warning citation issued. And in addition to that, I'm left to wonder how it is that a 16-year-old black youth suffering mental health issues can be confronted and shot by Des Moines police officers without engaging assistance from mental health professionals in lieu of the broad law's now protocol that's in place. It is far past time that the Des Moines Police Department be held accountable in reality and not just on paper. An excellent way to start that process will be to freeze the Des Moines Police Department budget for the upcoming budget cycle, and then take all necessary actions to truly implement the progressive steps being adopted on paper and those additional recommendations being made by the community, almost all of which have now been supported by your own experts. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Gina O'Donnell, and I am a resident of Ward 3, 2736 Forest Drive. I'm also a member of Iowa CCI Racial Justice Team and Des Moines Surge. We appreciate the resources provided by the city to hire Public Works LLC to perform a review of how data is currently used by the DMPPD to inform the effectiveness of their policies and practices. As a data professional working on government contracts, I know that building a data-informed culture is a heavy lift and requires, first and foremost, the commitment of leadership to dedicate resources to the task and to make it a priority. People don't like learning new systems, especially technology. So if leadership is not truly committed to this, then your people will not commit either. We wonder whether this commitment is truly there. For example, one of the Public Works recommendations was to create and staff a data analysis unit within the DMPPD. We see on the DMPPD org chart that the data analysis unit is listed as an entity under the Executive Projects Division. However, it is our understanding that it doesn't really exist at this time, and that there is no budget item either in next year's budget. Again, on paper, but not in practice. However, we also see that Kalia accreditation is also an entity within the executive projects. We understand that this is active and staffed, and it will remain so because there's a time deadline for completion, and then ongoing recertification activities. So it looks like to us on the outside that the data analysis unit is a low priority compared to the accreditation process. I'm sure if and when the DMPPD gets accredited, it will be a great public relations opportunity for the city and DMPPD, and it will be used by some to minimize our concerns. Getting basic Kalia accreditation should be expected for all police departments. It's the baseline for professional practice.
Mayor, City Council members, Viola Perry, CCI Racial Justice Team, 50310, Ward 1. First of all, to those of you that have been willing to listen to us and work with us, CCI, I thank you. Next. On March 21, 2022, I spoke to council members about a community review board that would work for more transparency and accountability of DMPPD. My, or some of my comments were, what's the fear? What's the delay? Then, on May of 2022, Public Works LLC presented the council its 23 recommendation, which validated several points and CCI 2018 racial profiling ordinance. One of those points was a citizen review board, CRB. Now, Public Works LLC's community advisor. Now, Public Works LLC's Community Advisory and Review Board, CARB, recommends community involvement of diverse members, stakeholders, advocates, and those with lived experience. Now with that said, here, March 20, going ahead of myself, March 6, 2023, we are still advocating for a strong CRB, CRB board that has a voice in community safety. It is unacceptable to create a review board of figureheads, of passive pencil-pushing, paper-shuffling folk who don't have any significant impact on what's needed to be done. Now, my hope is that I won't have to stand here in March of 2024, again, asking for a community review board. Thank you.
Jolene Prescott.
Hi, my name is Jolene Prescott. I live at 30133rd Street, and I just want to talk about parking over by Wells Fargo Arena, because there's this little parking, parking lot that I like to sit in and read and listen to the water go over the falls, right there. And I call it the dam and, and footbridge parking. But what happens is whenever there's anything at Wells Fargo Arena, employees park there, people going to it, things there, park there, and that is a two-hour lot, and that's the reason it's a two-hour lot, it only has 10 spaces. And it, so we end up, then I see people coming in with their kids, wanting to do something in that area, but all these cars are sitting here, that are here all day. Now, I talked to Wells Fargo Arena about this, and they said, well, we need, you need to, you need to get the police out there, you need to get your parking person out there. So I've had them do that, but the problem we're having now is that the fine for parking in there is only $15, and it's $10 to go park over at Wells Fargo Arena, like these people are supposed to. And I was hoping maybe you could consider raising the fine in that area so that people who want to fish, people who want to go out onto the bridge, people who want to get on the trail there, because there's a very nice accessible parking space now, so people in a wheelchair could get out there. But if you would raise that maybe to $30, I think that would be very helpful. I think it's similar to the thing we had where people were parking their trucks on the street instead of going to where they're supposed to go. So if you could do that and think about it, thank you.
Thank you. Tom Rendon.
My name is Tom Rendon. I live at 3704 Adams Avenue in Ward 1, and I'm also a member of the CCI Racial Justice Team. On November 11, the City of Des Moines, with approval from the City Council, entered into a contract with 21st CP Solutions to make, I quote, "recommendations to strengthen public safety, policing, and community well-being through a professional assessment of the Des Moines Police Department's policies, procedures, protocols, and training regarding various types of community interaction and overall culture," end of quote. This action was encouraged and supported by many in the community, including the racial justice team of Iowa citizens for community improvement. Last month, I participated in one of their online listening sessions and felt that there was ample time for me and others on the, who participated in that meeting, to express our views about the Des Moines Police Department. And I know that there have been many other such sessions have already taken place, and many that will continue to take place throughout this month. A key to the work of the 21st Century CP Solutions is to listen to the community, especially to address longstanding concerns about the transparency and accountability of the police department in the face of numerous incidents of unfair and discriminatory policing practices and the use of excessive force. I appreciate the city and the council for taking this step. I hope this process will yield a set of recommendations that the council will take very seriously and work expeditiously to implement. Thank you.
Thank you. Adam Callanan.
Adam Callanan, he/him pronouns, Ward 3. I would just like to remind everybody here and online or watching this later this week that we are in an election year. There are local elections this November. We have four seats, that's a majority of seats, are up for election. We have the seats for mayor currently held by county at large, currently held by Voss, Ward 4, currently held by Gatto in Ward 2, currently held by Westergaard. We have a lot of deep establishment in the city that has really failed the people of Des Moines over the past few years, and I'm optimistic that we can get some new fresh faces onto the council and start, not even start, continue the change that we started last election cycle. Yes, thank you for your time.
Lori Young.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. I'm Lori Young. I'm with Just Voices Iowa, and I'm also a member of CCI's Racial Justice Team. I live in Ward 1. Tonight, you've heard from many of my fellow activists on many things related to policing. We take time out of our lives, many of us for years now, because we care about equitable policing. We believe in the principles of community policing, transparency, and accountability. These things breed trust, integrity, and they foster truth, and they create improved public safety for all. While we are grateful for the good decisions and progressive steps you've made in recent years since George Floyd's murder, we are cautiously optimistic. Why? Because the progress has been very slow. There should be urgency in protecting our most vulnerable residents who are prone to racial profiling stops. Black people in Des Moines are still three times more likely to be stopped for a traffic or equipment violation. Why is that? Even with the Public Works study, the Marijuana Task Force recommendations of 2020, there's just not much progress to celebrate yet. And so we come before you once again, asking you to implement better data collection, a community review board, and to freeze the DMPPD budget. All sound, responsible, and reasonable requests. Rest assured, we will continue to monitor progress. To meet with those of you who are willing to dialogue and listen, we will continue to organize the people towards these positive police reforms, reforms that the community supports and wants you to enact. And we will continue to collect data and research, share victims of, share victim stories of police misconduct, and assist people with filing complaints, because we care. We don't come to attack, we come to affirm, and to work with those of you who are committed to building a better and a more just Des Moines. Thank you.
Thank you.
Your Honor, I'll make a motion to receiving file 67A through H.
Is there a second? There's a motion, a second, please vote. Motion carries.
Seven.
Motion adjourned, Your Honor.
There's a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Aye. Aye.
Voice vote. With that, this meeting is adjourned.